Okay. I'll just start talking, I'm sure you'll be okay to follow along. So Article 5 is changes to the classification and compensation plans for regular status positions. Article 5 is reflected in the warrant reads, "To determine whether the town will vote to amend the classification and compensation plan for regular status town positions by adopting the following schedule to become effective July 1st, 2020, or take any other actions thereto." Look at the warrant to see the proposed schedules. They're long and they're usually in the consent calendar. The purpose of this article is to amend, in accordance to the personnel bylaw, the classification and compensation plan for non-union, for non-union regular status town employees, again, effective in July. It's interesting to note, or rather important to note, that this, the personnel bylaw affects 60% of the town's regular workforce and less than 15% if you include the total workforce where school and non-regular employees are included. What is not covered by Article 5 is how much money will be allocated to employee salaries and salary increases in FY 2021. Actual salary increases are set by the town manager and the personnel board after town meeting within the limits of the approved general fund and enterprise fund budgets. Article 5 only approves job titles, grouping of positions and degrades, and salary ranges. Adoption of the warrant would incorporate the classifications set forth in Article 4, increase all salary ranges, midpoints, and maximums by 2.5%, except SF which is swim fitness and HS which is health, human services, where there's no increase to the maximum. And there are increases to the minimum of swim fitness 1 and health sciences A to meet Massachusetts' minimum wage law. The town manager and human resource director recommended these amendments to the plan based on current and anticipated workforce needs, the need to continually review compensation provided by similar municipalities, light plants, fitness facilities, and other employees with comparable positions to those in Concord, and a continuing review of pay equity for comparable positions. The town meeting, as previously mentioned, the town meeting on Article 5 affects salary ranges but does not control the amount of the actual salary to be received by any particular employee. So it is not a direct cost, there's not a direct cost associated with the adoption of this plan. Actual salary increases are set by the town manager and personnel board after budgets are established in town meeting. Therefore, if Article 5 is approved by town meeting but funding for salary increases is not available in the approved budget, the salary range limits will increase while each individual employee's actual pay will not. Likewise, if Article 5 is not approved by town meeting, employees may still receive salary increases within the expected range limits without increasing them, provided the funds are available. So in conclusion, the personnel board recommends that a fair and competitive plan is important, a factor for, actually, that's our reason. No, we are hoping that there's an understanding that passing this article will establish a fair and competitive plan that is very, very important for both attracting and retaining the employees that the town of Concord expects. Questions? Comments?
Any questions from the committee?
Bill?
Just one question, and that is, you said it, this is comparable to similar municipalities? How does the range, I mean, where are we on that grid?
Amy, if you could clarify this, but I think we tried to get 80%, is that correct? Amy looks at comparable towns and surveys them as well as has data from the Massachusetts Municipal Association for HR.
Hi, I'm Amy Golding, Human Resources Director. So, yes, our general target that would be reestablished ranges or adjust them is to be in about the 85th percentile for our benchmark positions. There are some positions that are more than that, there are some that are less than that because we have to create ranges that work for all of those and we have to work within the Equal Pay Act laws, which mean that even if the market is different for one position than another, if they're considered comparable under the law, we have to have a pay plan that's equitable and similar. So there's a lot to consider in there. I can't give you one number at all. It's not right to say that every position is at a certain percentile, but we have benchmarks and guides that we use.
Yes, Dee?
Just one quick question.
You're speaking to the microphone, Dee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Of all the categories that you have, can you tell us, what are the top three that have the highest percent changes in, say, the last five years?
That's a good question.
Percent increases, I should say, in the last five years.
Let's see, if I think back, the last five years, most years, we have had a consistent increase for the majority of plans. Last year, we did quite a large number of adjustments after looking at those, so I'm just, sorry, thinking, I think bigger adjustments were made in the telecommunications ranges, some of the line crews at the light plant, those types of positions. In order to make them more competitive, we had to adjust the ranges more than we did for other positions.
Concord's unusual, and just keep in mind that we have many offerings and businesses that towns don't have typically, like the light plant, like the broadband, like the BD Center. So that we are, specifically for IT and municipal light plant, municipal light plant, we're competing with other municipal light plants, and in some cases, the private sector, but for IT, it's definitely the private sector. So that's an unusual position for municipality to be in.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the comments. So now, oops, I think I'm IT challenged.
He's gonna take care of it right here.
What?
He's taking care of it.
Excellent. So Article 6 is the one that probably might provide some discussion. What we are, what Article 6 is reflected in the warrant reads, "To determine whether the town will vote to strike the text of the personnel bylaw in its entirety and replace it with the following or any other actions relative thereto." Should I read it, or can you guys look through it?
This is pretty significant, I think it would, at least the gist of what it is we're doing here, this is pretty important.
I'll read it. It's easier to read it because it is a significant, well, it is a major change from what we have done in the past. I think it's continuous what we've done in the past, continuity, but it's different. "The town manager shall be entrusted with the administration of the town's personnel system. The town manager shall adopt and may amend rules and regulations to establish a lawful, equitable, and efficient system of personnel administration for town employees. The personnel system shall make use of modern concepts of personnel management and shall include but not be limited to the following elements: personnel policies indicating the rights, obligations, and benefits of employees; a classification system," that was Article 4, "a compensation system, Article 5, "a method for appointing employees based on merit principles, record-keeping systems, and other elements that are deemed necessary. All town agencies and positions shall be subject to the rules and regulations adopted under this section, except elected officials, employees of the school department, and as otherwise provided under Chapter 150E of the general laws. Furthermore, all compensation and benefits programs shall not exceed the limits established by appropriation. The personnel board shall be composed of three members appointed by the select board for three years. Currently, it's five members appointed by the select board for three years. The personnel board, at the request of the town manager, advises, shall, at the request of the town manager, advise the town manager regarding his obligations under this bylaw, should be his or her. But that advisory role is a current role of the personnel board, so that's just continuing the advisory role. What's changing is the centralization to the town manager and the HR department from the personnel board and town meeting, the administration of the classification, compensation, and paid and unpaid benefits. So far, so good. Any questions on sort of the gist of that? Okay. So on the detail. The goal of the article, the goal of the article is to support a personnel system that is efficient. And in terms of my experience being on the personnel board, this means optimizing the time of four different entities: the personnel board, town meeting, human resources department, and the town manager. To be responsive to the changing operational needs, employment law, Amy was describing pay equity, and workforce trends. Being, to be effective for the recruitment and retention of high-quality employees. Think in terms of the changing demands that our town has and the changing departments we've established, and being consistent with a strong town manager form of government. So what is the personnel bylaw? The bylaw defines wage and salary classification programs for non-union town staff. It addresses details such as job title, wages, salary ranges, and paid and unpaid leave. It doesn't apply to school and unionized employees. So bottom line, it applies to a quarter overall of town and Concord Public School System, the regular workforce. Town manager and personnel board have administrative authority for this bylaw. Note that it's wage and classification, job titles, wage, and paid leave, and with all changes voted on by town meeting. Historically, as we all know, these have been in the consent calendar. So let me explain, worth to step back and explain some of the challenges of the current personnel administrative system as it stands. If there is a need, for example, of a mid-year change to the classification or compensation plan, which is one section of the personnel bylaw, here's the process. One, the town manager, consistent with his or her authority, decides to modify the duties of a position. Two, the HR director evaluates the duties in light of internal equity. You know, we want to be sure across departments, people feel like they're being paid fairly. Market factors, that means are you competing with other municipal departments, other municipal light plants, or public. The relevant laws and recommends a job title and salary range. Three, the personnel board reviews their recommendation, and upon a board approval, the change takes effect. Four, as much as a year later, or at least many, many months later, often, town meeting votes to determine whether the implemented act should be made official. It's an inefficient process that leaves the employee and management often in an uncertain position for quite a period of time. The same would be if you wanted to, for example, change paid leave rules and regulations. If a new position is created and there needs to be a competitive pay package, for example, that maybe requires modification to non-union paid leave benefits or other attributes, it could take quite a few, quite a few months to get town meeting approval to offer such a benefit. We have heard situations in which we have not been able to make a timely offer to someone because the personnel board didn't meet, or because it had to be approved by town meeting, and other administrative problems. In other words, it's a sequential process, and it's a four-step sequential process. And we think that, or the personnel board believes that changes in Article 6 would improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the administration of the personnel system. The proposed, what's the concept of the proposed bylaw? It doesn't define all the details. It defines elements rather than those details. So it would require a lawful and equitable, efficient system of personnel administration. Please pay attention to the word "administration." It's administration of the elements of the personnel bylaw. Personnel policies about rights, obligations, and benefits; a job classification system; a compensation plan; and a method for appointing employees, as I'd mentioned before, based on merit; and a record-keeping system. We think that the, or the personnel board believes that the impact of article, of this change would be to centralize, or we say that the impact of this article would be, centralize employment compensation decisions to the town manager, so to have the authority for all town employees. Eliminate the need to bring these issues to the personnel board sequentially, to the personnel board, and subsequently, town meeting. Reduce the personnel board from five to three members, as currently appointed by the select board for three-year terms, and as current, retain the personnel board in an advisory role. So great. What's the future role of the personnel board? What might the personnel board do in the future? As I said, if the town manager requests, the personnel board can advise or may advise the town manager on some key HR issues. Some of the ones that we have discussed in the personnel board include workforce employment trends. And what I mean is, what do millennials, rather than, you know, folks my age, want in a, what do they want, and why do they want a job in Concord, in Concord Town Government? What are the non-compensation components of employment that Concord might offer? For example, flex time, because who likes to wait in Concord in traffic in the center of town? Work from home, if you have to accommodate child or elder parent care. On-the-job learning or special assignments to further an employee's career potential. This is something that we think, maybe in addition to salary, is important to people. Concord citizens have, as we know, high expectation of town employees. How does this change the type of employee that we want to attract? They have to have great people and communication skills. And retention strategies for key positions. We can't afford to have departments be down, many, many employees, if it's a critical service for the town. How do we up our game? And I think that's really what this is about. So why now? It's that Concord's been a leader in offering really innovative services. The light plant, I mean, I'm always bragging to my friends how we have our own light plant, and it has carbon-neutral goals, and so when we talk about green anything, Concord has a way that many other towns don't have to be green. The broadband service, which is like awesome, you know, effective, high-speed broadband, I love it. The BD Center. Citizens like these services, but as we increase the services, they're expecting high levels of service from the staff in those departments. Employment laws, as Amy was always telling me, are changing increasingly and rapidly, keeping track of those, being sure that the employment for town, that the, that there is, we are complying with regulations, changing regulations for town employees. Our HR systems have to be creative, responsive, competitive. And when I say, you know, state laws, that includes both union and non-union often, so that there's a reason to centralize this responsibility, because the personnel board only deals with non-union. Concord's form of government also has changed. It used to be that we had administrator with an HR department, with a personnel board that really administered the HR function. Now we have a strong town manager with a centralized and professional HR department. So, bottom line, the personnel board met and unanimously recommended the change in the personnel bylaw. So this is, this is unusual for the personnel board to be, you know, changing something so large, so I would recommend, you know, first ask, what does the finance committee questions have, that you all in the finance committee have?
Hi. Is this the way other towns do it, the way you're proposing it, or were we an outlier?
We were an outlier in, well, we were an innovator in having a personnel board initially. And then, as other towns, when we did a survey, and actually Susan Bates, well, before I was in the personnel board, Susan Bates did a survey, or the personnel board did a survey of other towns, and found that typically, with a strong manager form of government, there wasn't a personnel board, or if there was, it didn't have extensive responsibilities. The personnel boards that write job descriptions, that establish salary ranges, that maybe have a point system, is typically associated with an administrative form of government.
Thank you.
Bill?
So this will simplify town meeting?
You know, you'll save paper.
It's gonna save paper. Four or five pages in the warrant.
For example, we wouldn't have an Article 5.
No.
I'm all for it.
So I have, I do have a question about that. So this will not come before the town. What would be, in other words, the Articles 4 and 5 that we're gonna have this year?
In the future.
Will not come before the town in the future. What would be a process by which modifications to this system are reported out so that the community can be aware of what they are?
I do believe, and Amy can correct me on this, that all these, all the information's available on the website, the HR website, it is an issue about whether people look at it now and how they might look at it. It has not been defined, and, you know, that's an issue, about if there needs to be proactive communication, more proactive communication. I wouldn't say the personnel board has many attendees that monitor what is being recommended. So I'm not, you know, it might, I'm not sure the, well, I guess I don't have an answer about what, besides that it was already on the website, and maybe that there's a communication through, I don't know, the communications director that needs to happen. Not that the personnel board has always had attendees that won't have that option, but it might be just a good proactive thing to do.
I think the goal here is to be a little more, be a little bit more nimble, and that's good, but if we're creating new positions or changing salary ranges on an administrative basis, it might be helpful to have some way to, like a tickler that somehow could be looked at, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Right now, it's only a once-a-year affair.
Yeah, and that's the problem. It's not, you know, you have, after the fact, you see it, but if you really think that that, I don't know, people would get, you know, they might say, I do or don't, you know, there should be a position that does blank.
Right.
You know, there isn't currently a process for doing that. And the personnel board, again, is a recipient of what the town manager and HR director recommends.
But because of the rather, you know, deliberative process that ends up with this four-stage approach, it doesn't happen often, it is recorded, it is, you know?
Yes.
There's a framework for it, whereas now, it's gonna be a lot more fluid, I believe, and maybe we need to come up with some way that that, and not that it's constrained, but that it's obvious when changes are made.
Yeah, and I think that that would, you know, that's an obvious thing that could be incorporated into, through the town manager's responsibility in terms of communicating that, and perhaps finding a way in which to make it, transparency is clearly important. I guess I'd say that. Amy?
Can I just make a comment on that? You might find it helpful to think about what's printed every year in the budget book, because they are, the town manager has to work within the appropriation. Any year, there might be some changes as we go, but they still have to work within the appropriation. And in the budget book, there is a listing of intended positions, how many in each department, or charts, so that would be available each year, I would assume.
Thank you.
I have, oh, go ahead.
You have priority.
Oh, good, I have a question. On your sixth slide, which was a list of the responsibilities that the personnel board would continue to assume, one of them was that you would collect feedback, or citizens' expectations of town employees.
Oh, that is a possible, I mean, we were brainstorming, what do we think we should be doing?
Okay.
And it's, you know, try to understand what citizens want. It could be, for example, what new positions or what new activities do we wish that the town would undertake, and try to think about where that would come, and, you know, who currently does it, and, you know, job descriptions, although I'm not, we do want, I think the personnel board would very much like to understand how to provide a productive, a productive and, you know, rewarding experience for town employees, because it is a whole lot easier to retain someone than to hire them. And as millennials are, I mean, I don't know about you, but I've worked with a lot of millennials, and, you know, they'll stay for three to five years. How do we make that different?
Right. Yeah, I was keying in on the citizens' expectations.
Yeah, so this is a possible role.
So you're not doing that now?
No, it's may advise. Some ideas are, bullet, bullet, bullet. These are our ideas. They're not part of the article at all.
Okay.
Leslie Koplo, 118 Prescott.
Can you go to the mic, so it's gonna be recorded, please?
Leslie Koplo, 118 Prescott Road, Concord, Mass, former town employee.
Oh, okay, great, awesome.
So I have a couple of questions. One, when I was reading through the warrant and I came to this amendment, I was startled, and one of the first things I did was to go onto the website so that I could learn a little bit more about the personnel board and look at the past minutes, and...
You are, I know what you're gonna say, yeah. We, I agree, and...
There were no minutes since 2016.
That is correct.
And now, you're talking about reducing this from five members to three, and taking away some of the responsibility. So I was curious about the explanation for that, because really, I didn't have much to look at to understand, how does the personnel board function? And then, there's been talk about retention and attrition. In my role in IT, I do see a lot of turnover because I onboard and offboard people, or I did. From January of this past year to October, there were 51 people who left and 51 people who joined. So I'd be very interested in hearing how attrition is being addressed. This is not about getting millennials on board, this is about just retaining the people that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess I would say two things. One, that's, I think, an interest of everyone on the personnel board, but our responsibility is the execution and administration of the personnel bylaw, which doesn't explicitly talk about retention, except to be sure that job titles are created that reflect the person's responsibility, that there be career ladders, or, for example, have, you know, if there was a manager, and then, if there was a manager and then a worker, that there be job in between that provide a step for someone to provide a progression. Salaries that are competitive. Right now, we do not address what you might say are, like, broader pictures of what is the workforce, what is the workforce trend, what will the workforce look like in 2030, and what are smart retention strategies? It's a good, it's a great question. What I'm trying to say is, personnel board right now is really focused on efficiency and effectiveness in administration, and that's what the bylaw says. Mark?
Hi, I'm Mark Howell, and I live at 668 Nurse Nak Hill Road. Also, until January of this year, I was chief information officer for the town of Concord, but I'm no longer employed by the town. As the IT department head, I have responsibility for recruiting both IT and broadband staff, and I've appeared before the personnel board on a number of occasions in that capacity. With that background, I'd offer the following comments and suggestions. Article 66 would, in fact, completely replace the personnel bylaw. And while I agree that the bylaw does need attention, I do not agree that this is the approach we should take at this time. I don't think it's ready. The town services upon which we all depend are delivered through a combination of three elements: financial resources, processes and procedures, and, which are the purview of the administration, and the workforce or staff. And a workforce strategy is a way to pay attention to the current and future workforce needs. It helps organizations address long-term trends and meet goals. Many organizations recognize that a workforce strategy is a critical element to success. The town of Concord has a long tradition of citizen engagement and strategic efforts. A recent example in Concord would be the way in which the Energy Futures Task Force informed the town's approach to sustainability. In my view, such an effort is needed now in the areas of talent and personnel. Changes to the workforce, the technology we use, the demographics of the town, and the services that we're trying to provide, all point to a need for a more strategic approach to the workforce and the issues of employee recruiting and retention. It's very important to address these issues. It is the personnel board which should, on behalf of the select board and the citizens, study and propose goals in the areas that are consistent with the community's values, the administration's needs, and employee concerns. The functions of the personnel board are controlled by three documents: the town charter, which simply requires that the board be appointed by the select board, the personnel bylaw, which we're discussing here, and the personnel board charge, which comes from the select board. Ideally, these documents would outline the town's approach to personnel governance and workforce strategy, but they do not. The town charter requires there be a personnel board, but makes no mention of the board's functions or duties. It's my understanding that the select board has not updated the personnel board charge since 1985. That charge is largely administrative and repeats much of what is in the bylaw. The Town Governance Study Committee in its 2014 report recommended that the changes, charges to all committees be updated every five years or so. Clearly, there's not been enough attention paid to the personnel board function, and that should be addressed. The current bylaw runs 14 pages, and it is quite administrative in nature. Although the bylaw as it stands is insufficient, it's important to know that it does define many of the terms of employment controlling the working conditions for town employees who are not part of collective bargaining agreements. Removing all these elements from the bylaw, you heard the whole thing read a few minutes ago, without being specific about what replaces them and communicating what processes will be used to maintain those conditions in the future, could create concerns and uncertainty among this critically important part of our town's professional workforce. The bylaw replacement as proposed in Article 6 with just four short elements doesn't address the larger issues I have outlined. It simply delegates personnel administration to the town manager, decreases the size of the board from five members to three members, and the personnel board's only responsibility is to advise the town managers only when the town manager requests it. I believe this proposed replacement would be destabilizing and counter... I believe this proposed replacement would be destabilizing and counterproductive, because so little is known about the goals, and virtually nothing about the implementation plan. To my knowledge, there's been no substantive discussion at the Select Board, or publicized hearings on replacing the Personnel Bylaw by any Board, and, as noted a little earlier, published minutes of the discussion of the Personnel Board leading up to this proposal does not exist. Because of these many concerns, I believe that the article should not be moved at Town Meeting. Instead, I suggest that the Select Board fill the open position on the Personnel Board, and then charge the Board with studying and reporting on this matter, with a goal of proposing a new permanent charge and an appropriate bylaw replacement that reflects the Town's values and goals for workforce strategy. The strategy should place an emphasis on the importance of attracting and retaining the workforce we need. The implementation plan for the new bylaw should make it clear how the elements of the current bylaw and associated policies which impact non-union employees will be replaced and maintained once they are no longer part of the bylaw. Employees depend on these elements of the bylaw and associated policies in important ways. The committee will send an important signal about how it evaluates employees by being deliberate and thorough in this effort. I'd like to thank the Personnel Board for bringing this to the Town's attention. I am sure that with some citizen involvement and appropriate strategy for personnel governance can be developed. I urge you to take the time to get this right. Please consider working on this more before bringing it to Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita Techley, 260 Virginian Road. Could you go back to Slide Three, please? I have a question on that. In the middle, it indicates that the Personnel Bylaw does not apply to school and unionized employees. And yet, the next line said it applies to a quarter of the town and CPS regular workforce. Neither of those is incorrect, but I think it's deceiving.
Oh.
That sub-line, it really, since it doesn't apply to school employees, it's sort of irrelevant. It applies to somewhere between a third and a half, and Amy might have a better handle on the actual numbers, of town employees. And that is really where Concord is an anomaly, that so much of its workforce is non-unionized. And that leads me to a question. One key element of the Personnel Bylaw, of the Personnel Board, was to serve as a grievance officer for the non-unionized employees. And how, how do you propose that that would be handled?
It's, first of all, you're right, that it's about 60% of town employees is not unionized, which is extremely unusual for any towns, and so that's-
Which is why we have a Personnel Board traditionally.
Yeah, and, and, well, yes. And I think it might be as much historic, but it is true, you know, fact. Concord has a very low unionization, unionized rate. And one of the questions is, what is the reason for that, and how can we preserve that? Or how can we, more importantly, preserve the quality and reduce the churn of people we want to keep? I'm sorry, but other question was?
The other question was, one role of the Personnel Board was the grievance officer-
Yeah, so the grievance process is actually-
If I could just clarify, if an employee is not pleased with an administrative action by-
Right.
-the Town Manager, or the HR Department, they went to the Personnel Board. So how would that be handled?
It's still the same. There is a Policy and Procedure Number 25, and also the charge that the Select Board gave to the Personnel Board includes a grievance process. I think it's been used, I've never been on the Personnel Board when it's been used, but it's been used at least maybe once in the last long period of time, for a union, non-unionized employee. But that is still in Policy and Procedure Number 25. And it's also in the charge from 1985, from the Select Board to the Personnel Board.
However, under the proposed new bylaw, you would only be serving in an advisory capacity to the Town Manager.
I don't think that changes. I mean, I guess I'd-
So I guess I would ask that somehow the, the role of, as a grievance officer for the 60% of the town employees who are non-unionized, somewhere that that-
Yeah.
-be clarified. Where do the employees go if they're not happy with an action that is-
Amy, does the policies and procedures, like that Number 25, remain in effect if the Personnel Bylaw is replaced? I thought it did. Maybe I'm wrong.
So there is an existing policy that has been adopted by the Personnel Board and Town Manager jointly. There are pieces of the policy that are under the Town Manager's authority, pieces that are under the Personnel Board's authority. So the current appeal process allows an employee to bring two types of things forward for appeal. First, through a supervisor, then through the Department Head, then to the Town Manager, then Personnel Board for an advisory opinion, and then back to the Town Manager for a final decision on all matters. Those two types of matters are, one, if, if an employee is, does not believe with a disciplinary action, a termination, or something like that, that is fully the Town Manager's authority. There's nothing in the Personnel Bylaw right now that gives the Personnel Board that authority. It's a policy that has been established, or a process that's been established by the Town Manager through policy. So a change in the Personnel Bylaw wouldn't impact that, and the Town Manager could choose in the future to remove the Personnel Board from that or not. Then, the other type of action, and I should say, also, the, the Town Manager is the appointing authority in accordance with the Town Charter. And that is in the Charter. It says that the Town Manager shall appoint for merit and fitness alone, and may remove for cause, which is a standard that's different than, you know, the private sector, where you, or just in Massachusetts, where employees are employees that will. The Charter provides cause protection, which is a whole other legal discussion that we could get into. But the part about appeals, the second thing that an employee could appeal is if they don't agree with an application or interpretation of the Personnel Bylaw, the terms of the vacation, or the sick leave, or all the various things that are covered in there. I don't think in my 30 years, there's been such an appeal, but that doesn't mean that there couldn't be. That, to date, has been, again, something that goes to the Personnel Board as an advisory opinion, and then the Personnel Board advises to the Town Manager who makes the final decisions. So, you know, whether or not the bylaw changes through Article Six, my understanding is that that policy could be changed.
Any other questions? Thank you. By the way, on behalf of the Personnel Board, thank you very much for the comments. It's really important to us.
Okay.
Thank you.